Alright, the time is coming. The time has come for, to start our Tuesday, January 2nd, 2018, Redley-Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call please.
Alderman Bolton. Alderman Seager. Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present. Please stand, and we will ask Pastor Jose Luis Oliver to please come and lead us in prayer, and right after the prayer, we will go into, pleasure leaves.
Good evening to everyone. Heavenly Father, Lord Jesus, Holy Spirit, we are before you today as our city government gathers to convene in its first meeting of 2018. We are grateful that you have established authority as a means to govern and steward the lives of our city and nation's people. Today, we ask you to guide our leaders in Waukegan to rightly administer with wisdom, mercy, and justice. Assist us to, with your spirit of counsel and fortitude, to enact laws and ordinances that would benefit the people and glorify you. May we always seek the ways of righteousness. Grant that our leaders may be enabled by your power of protection to lead us with honesty and integrity. Bless our city with your grace. We ask all these things through Christ Jesus, our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you Pastor, from Latin Pentecostal Church located at 100 South Chapel Street, Waukegan, Illinois. We thank you. First of all, Happy New Year to everyone, and thanks again for coming tonight. Warming centers. It is dangerously cold outside, as we all can see. The fire department has prepared a list of warming centers throughout the city of Waukegan. Please check the table outside council chambers for this information. Also, check the city's website. I'm gonna go through the five that I have right in front of me. One of them is the Waukegan Public Library, Waukegan Township Park Place, Waukegan Park District Belvedere Recreational Center, Waukegan Park District Jack Benny Center, Illinois Department of Human Services. We ask that you please check those following locations for the times that they're available. Last week, we teamed up with the city of North Chicago, Lake County Workforce Development, and Hydro Force for a hiring event in our Waukegan City Council chambers. This was a well-attended, well-attended event, and Hydro Force has informed us that they're making job offers to about fifty people who attended. This is incredible, so I want to thank all of our partners for organizing this. Also, I want to put out the word to all Waukegan area businesses that we would love to host your company for a job hiring event. So if you're interested, please call my office at 847-599-2510. Polar Bear Plunge. As y'all can see, that we were the only one, the only city that had a polar bear plunge. I didn't get in the water. Let's be clear, I did not get in the water. But I did, I made a donation, and I got that from somebody that I know. Make the donation. But it was, we want to thank all the brave participants on the 19th Annual Waukegan Polar Bear Plunge that happened on January, January the 1st. I don't think it was cold out. Money was raised to benefit the special recreation services at the northern Lake County at Waukegan Park District. Coles, in preparation for the Papa Museum for Coles Children's Museum, there will, there will be at the urban edge through the end of February. They are looking to hire an exhibit guide. Please check our website, correction, please check out their website, coleschildrensmuseum.org, careers, exhibit guide, for more information. Or feel free to give our office a call, we can give you a telephone number. Upcoming events, the Waukegan Park District is hosting a job fair this Thursday, January the 4th, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Fieldhouse. MLK Day, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, Waukegan Township on Monday, January the 15th, at 10:00 a.m. at Lakehurst Banquet, formerly Sundance Saloon. The Waukegan Township is hosting a breakfast for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. You can contact Waukegan Township at 847-244-9240 for more details. Genesee Theater, Saturday, January 13th, Jim Belushi and the Board of Comedy will be at Genesee Theater. Again, more information is www-geneseetheater.com for more details. And check our city's website for more details on upcoming events. Motion, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest, to approve remedy minutes from December 18th, 2017. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May, to approve committee of the whole annexation hearing meeting minutes from December 18th, 2017. Any questions to the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion's passed and carried. Audience time, Madam Clerk.
Okay, thank you. That'll be for three minutes. The first is Kathy Breen with Oak Street Health. Please step right on up to the podium, speak into the mic, and it's three minutes.
Hi, I'm Kathy Breen with Oak Street Health for a new medical facility that opened up at Green Bay and Grand in Waukegan in October. We are a medical clinic for people that just have Medicare. So the doctors of Oak Street Health decided because most people on Medicare or people with disabilities that have Medicare have complex needs. So it's kind of old school, no portals, no emails, you get phone calls from people. We have people there that can help with their insurance needs. Our staff is all bilingual on the clinical side, and one of the doctors speaks Russian. We provide free transportation to and from all doctor's appointments at Oak Street Health in a ten-mile radius, which covers all of Waukegan. And we have twenty to forty-minute doctor times, we never double book, and we also have a community center attached to the building. I emailed all of you on Friday with the inserts, but I know some people can't print them, so we wanted to welcome the council and the people of Waukegan to learn about Oak Street Health. If anybody has any questions, you can come in and see us, and we book all out-of-center events. And I will be the person responsible for that, and also my boss is with me, Tanika, who has done some things in the community already. Thank you.
Well done Kathy.
Thank you. Joseph Torres.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman, I just appeared at the 41 North Orchard in Waukegan, Illinois. I just wanted to give a big thank you to the Waukegan Police Department. I had a family member pass away at the end of this past year, and they stepped up and helped our family present services to where we needed to go out to the burial. And I wanted to give a personal shout-out to the Waukegan Police Department for being there for us and our family, escorting us out to the cemetery.
Thank you. Brother Blanks.
Brother Blanks, founding chief president of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. Last city council meeting, the city reached out to embrace Quanza. Once again, we really appreciate that. And in the spirit of that, I mean, I remember last year, I had voiced my concerns. I said sometimes when you go down there where you pay the bills, the water bill and everything, that oftentimes you see decorations for St. Patrick's Day and various, you know, celebrations and the decorations there. And, you know, and I, if ever I, whenever I bring the issue, I usually try to be solution-oriented. So with that being said, since the city reached out in an effort to embrace Quanza, I wanted to present the city with their first Quanza Canora inset. And I would request that perhaps this year, when Quanza rolls around, you know, Quanza don't require as much elaborate decorations, all it, all it takes is really setting it up, putting the candles in, and perhaps you all can designate somebody to take care of this, set it up, and make sure that it's taken care of and it's valued just as much as the Christmas tree and any other decorations. So on behalf of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind, I want to present this to the city and to the mayor, and to say thank you all for embracing and continue to work in the spirit of diversity and inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this right here, I think I gave it to you all before, but you can put this with it, because that's the foundation, which is the inluzus sable that is copy of the principle.
Thank you Brother Blanks. That concludes the public time.
Make sure you keep that paper with you, little man, that was very, very nice. The article they had where they show your grandsons, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that was real nice of them. I kept a copy, thank you. Motion by Alderman Valco, and second by Alderman Taylor, recognition of April Tax Service, Inc. celebrating their 25-year anniversary. Are there any questions to the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's been passed and carried.
They are here.
They are here?
Absolutely.
Come on up. Come on.
Come on up, I'm sorry. Yes, come on up.
Julie Ecker and my husband Gary Ecker, we started the business, and I brought my two employees.
Come on up too.
Patty Mendez and Tony Ortiz, without which I couldn't be doing the business I do. So we're very proud to have been part of the city for 25 years and looking at many more years to come.
Well, I think it's fitting to let everyone know that this business is in our downtown Waukegan.
Yes.
And what's the address?
126 North Genesee Street.
126 North Genesee Street.
Right between Emmy Uniforms and Soto's Furniture.
Alright, wow, oh yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You've got some, the old names there, that's good stuff. Well, congratulations to you and your staff. Yes. And, you know, alright, for you and your staff. You know, it's a testament of good service. I was once told, when I was young, at the Waukegan Fruit Market, that when you take care of your customers, your customers will take care of you. After 25 years of service, particularly in the tax business, they have taken care of you for you to be there this long. So what we're gonna do right now, I'm gonna come out front and take a photo with you. Jane, come on up, here we go.
Mayor, can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
So I just also want to recognize the business, because Julie has participated in Citizens Police Academy, she's very involved in the Downtown Business Roundtable, and they've done beautiful renovations to their building, so they are a huge asset on many levels, besides Gary being a great tax preparer as well, for me, for more than a decade now, so, yeah, congratulations, thanks for being there.
Absolutely, let me get my two cents in, since she does my taxes. Been doing it for many years. You sir, every time I go, I've never met you formally, but you, every time I go in there, I got pictures of you climbing every single mountain in North America. Have you hit the Himalayas yet?
She won't let me go.
Won't let you go. And your daughter is now a major?
Captain.
Captain, and working in the Pentagon?
The Pentagon.
At the Pentagon. So good Waukegan family, you've done great here Julie, and also, beside Citizens Police Academy, you used to be a teacher with me in the landlord-tenant program. Very good. So my congratulations to all of you, young ladies and everything, congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to be kind of front and center for the city of Waukegan? Come on over ladies. You know what, 25 years of being in our downtown, Alderman, and everyone uptight, would you mind joining us please?
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
Valco, everybody. I think this is a, this is a special reason why I let her show all the appreciation, she said thank you.
Where are you?
Yeah, don't let him go up there.
Who snuck in on me?
There you go.
You have the front seat.
Do we have, you have the city of Waukegan?
We do.
Alright.
Hurry up mom.
Brain freeze.
Here we go, everybody, look in this direction, smiling, we have you.
Alright, that's it. Thank you again, you guys take care.
Sorry, thank you.
This is right?
I didn't know you were hiding back there.
Thank you.
Oh, look out, Lisa, look out. Boots, they might hit you over the head for those boots. Those are good-looking boots.
Oh, I will, I will. I'll see you guys next year.
This is style. Pretty boots, I like those boots. Alright. Good style, good style.
Alright, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Mozio, recognition for Michael Dudley being awarded Air Force ROTC Cadet Gold Valor Honor. And to read that, Madam Clerk?
Waukegan Proud Award for Michael Dudley. Michael Dudley, a senior Rose Holman Institute of Technology Mechanical Engineering student, is considered a hero by the Air Force Reserve Officers Training Corps. The Corps' Gold Valor Award, the highest award honor that can be bestowed upon an Air Force ROTC candidate, recognized Dudley for his quick actions, act of self-sacrifice, and personal bravery that saved the life of a fellow student last spring. Dudley noticed a fellow Rose Holman student was in a life-threatening situation during an off-campus event. His immediate course of action resulted in a safe and secure conclusion of the situation. By his prompt actions and humanitarian regard for his fellow man, Cadet Dudley has reflected credit upon himself in the Air Force Reserve Officers Training Corps, remarked Air Force ROTC Commander Colonel Michael Sowa. Cadet Michael Dudley is from Waukegan and went to Waukegan Public Schools. Upon graduating from Rose Holman, he will be commissioned as Second Lieutenant in the Air Force and will apply his engineering and flying interest as a combat systems operator.
You know, you better turn this way to the city. You know, I often talk about telling the story. No, everyone does not tell the Waukegan story. You are the Waukegan story. This is what Waukegan is all about. I'm glad that we were able to recognize what you've been able to do to represent your hometown, so we thank you, we appreciate you. And worth that, we are calling you our Waukegan Proud. And it says, "The City of Waukegan hereby presents Michael Dudley the Waukegan Proud Award for his quick actions, act of self-sacrifice, and a personal bravery, bravery, superb the life, and saved the life of a fellow student at Rose Institute of Technology." Is it Indiana? I don't have my glasses. In Indiana, is considered a hero. You are considered a hero to not only to us, but to many young men and ladies that come behind you. So congratulations to you, my friend. Thank you very much. Before we take that picture, Jane, I want you to tell, tell everyone, how did you come about this information?
Well, I do searches for the city of Waukegan.
Face the camera, face the camera.
I always do searches for the city of Waukegan, and Google search for the city of Waukegan, and this popped up, and I knew his mother, so I thought, this is a good one. This is something that we can all say, congratulations, and we're proud of it.
It is, you know, so often our young men and our young ladies don't get the recognition they deserve with some of the things they're doing in Waukegan. Sometimes, or most of the times, only the bad information's put out there, nothing good. We want to recognize that, and that's why, so we're proud of you, keep it up, you're going places, that I promise you. So now we're gonna go up and take a picture with your family. So come on up.
Come on Katie.
And we're gonna come right here, we have to be in the middle, correct?
They're looking like.
You're not in high school, right?
No.
You gotta, you look young.
Nice job Alderman, nice job.
You look young? Yeah. No, we're just getting older.
There it is. Everybody, here we go.
Look in this direction, smiling, we're happy. Here we go.
Alright, did you want to say anything? I want you to go right up to the mic, yes, you have to say something. Military men.
Well, thank you very much for this honor. I certainly wasn't expecting to receive something like this when I was coming home from my winter break, so thank you. I'm very much, very glad that my friend is still around, been able to talk to him, he's doing well, he's actually living in Chicago, and he's finishing things up, he's on the right track. Thank you very much.
He has that military posture, doesn't he? Alright, I couldn't see a thing there y'all. Oh, we have, I'm sorry, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Thank you, take care sir.
Thank you.
Labor Relations. You want to take that?
Labor Relations Committee, item A, motion to adopt ordinance 2018-2018, and ordinance codifying a policy prohibiting sexual harassment as required by Act, Public Act 1000554, signed into law by Governor Rowner on November 16th, 2017, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest, are there questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Judiciary Committee, Alderman May.
Thank you Mayor. First item on the Judiciary Committee this evening is a motion to approve zoning calendar number 2548, which is site plan approval of the southwest corner of Lakeside Drive and Waukegan Road for the McGaw Business Center Overlay District, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Valco, any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Second item is a motion to approve an ordinance adopting revisions to the water and sewer chapter of the city of Waukegan ordinances, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor, are there questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Public Safety, Alderman Mozio.
Thank you, Honored, item A, motion authorized to proper city officials to draft an order for handicap parking requested at 239 North Genesee Street, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mozio, second by Alderman Valco, are there questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Thank you. Item B, motion to authorize an ordinance prohibiting parking along Doug Dale Road, both sides, between 10th Street and 14th Street, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mozio, second by Alderman Villalobos, any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, thank you. Item, item number eight, reports of communication, information, planning and zoning department to release RFP for a comprehensive land use plan. I'm gonna ask Noel, come up, give us some information on this, and kind of the process, and maybe some timelines, I don't know, I know I didn't ask you about that one, but you'd have been able to.
Sure, and I'll be brief, as I'm quite a sore throat, so.
So am I.
I apologize if I'm difficult here tonight. As you know, we've been working on an RFP for a while, and the time has come for us to release that unless there are any objections from the city council. We'd like to post it on our website and push it out to planning firms starting tomorrow. The proposals will be due on February 21st, so there's about a six-week response time. Review of proposals will take place from then through the month of March. Reviews will include the staff, but much more importantly, they will include the steering committee that the mayor has established, and at least a few of those members are here tonight, if I may recognize them.
Yes.
Steering committee members, would you stand up for a second? So thank you to all of these volunteers who will, I'll be putting hard at work late February. I think they deserve a round of applause. So all the proposals that we get, we don't know how many it'll be, I know when we did our master plan in 2003, we had 53 responses. I'm hoping that it's not quite that many, but it's a significant number to review. So this group, along with their colleagues on the steering committee, will be instrumental in reviewing those and scoring those applications. Tina from our finance department provided some really valuable feedback in terms of how to handle scoring and to break out the financial piece separately, so that'll be done on the staff level, and I'll be recruiting Tina for that, this is the first she's hearing about me, sorry Tina. I'll be recruiting her to help the planning staff with that component, so the scoring will be weighted a little differently than ones we've done in the past, but we think that it'll be much better, and I appreciate Tina's input on that, that was really, really valuable for us. So this plan will replace our 1987 Comprehensive Plan. We expect it'll probably take in the neighborhood of 18 months to go through the planning process, and it will involve a lot of stakeholder input from the community, from the Alderman, from staff, from all sorts of people who are vested in the future of Waukegan and have valuable input to provide. The exact timeline for that and the format of that will be proposed in those submittals by the consultants. So that'll be part of our review with the staff and the steering committee, determining what looks best in terms of the timeline and the kind of meetings, the number of meetings, the way that outreach will happen. So we'll be considering that along the way. And then we'll, we expect to select the consultants in April and kick off the project with the new fiscal year in May.
Alright, well, thank you, I look forward to this, I know this is gonna, it's a major step for Waukegan. I know this is going to, it's a major step for Waukegan. We're going to be replacing our 1987 plan. And that's, hopefully that will kick off some other interesting things for our community. So thank you, Noel, I look forward to that. And thank you, volunteers from Alderman to those in, out in the audience. Look forward to working with you, all right? And is that Chuck, former Alderman of the city of Waukegan, many moons ago? But he's back, huh? See? Full circle, Chuck, full circle. Thank you very much. Number nine, no old business. Number 10, new business. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Taylor, to, to approve end payment date of January the 2nd, 2018, in total amount of $1,843,681.40. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item B, motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Moseo, to approve regular payroll dated December 22nd, 2017, in total amount of $1,521,091.36. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item C, motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Villalobos, to approve sworn police uniform allowance payroll dated December 15th, 2017, in a total amount of $86,920. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item D, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman May, to approve local 150 comp time cash payout payroll dated December 22nd, 2017, in a total amount of $383.82. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item E, motion by Alderman Villalobo, second by, second by Alderman Moseo, to, uh, motion to approve final cash out for the following names listed on the agenda, payroll dated December 22nd, 2017, in a total amount of $53,171.91. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item 11, no, no ordinance to present. Item 12, Alderman's time.
Alderman Moseo.
Pass.
Alderman Villalobos.
I'll keep it, try to keep it brief. I just want to thank everyone for braving the weather out tonight. It's pretty frigid. Wish everyone a Happy New Year and hopefully everyone has a wonderful 2018. Looking forward to it, thanks again.
Alderman Newsome.
Pass.
Alderman Tempest.
Pass.
Alderman May.
Um, I just thank, thank everyone, have, wish everyone a Happy New Year. Um, I just wanted to call attention, we did approve an item in Judiciary Committee tonight, which is an additional, two buildings going up at Bridge Development. So I just wish them continued success, this project. You know, we annexed the Cardinal Health property into Waukegan, and they continue to build, and they continue to fill these buildings. So it's been a very successful venture. So congratulations to Bridge Development for, for that item. And that's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Valco.
Deputy Chief Supak, my congratulations to you, sir, and to the police department. And please relay that to the chief also on conducting the second youth Citizens Police Academy, the 40-hour that the, the adults usually go through. And it was done during the school break, so they didn't miss any school, and they learned everything that the adults learn. And I understand it was a great success. And again, my congratulations to Lieutenant Beach also. Thank you, sir, that's all I have.
Alderman Taylor.
I'm not going to piggyback on anything, so I'm just going to pass on this one. Thank you. Mayor.
Mayor, you know what, I'm, I'm sorry, but I should have said something. Absolutely, I met some of those young men for the youth citizen, outstanding group, outstanding group. So congratulations to you guys again. Motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Taylor, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
I have it, Happy New Year, everybody.